This is a special meeting of the Long Beach Building Commission, October 23rd, 2020. We'll call the meeting to order 105. Roll call, it looks like everybody is here at present along with her town attorney and one or two other council members. There is no commissioner's report, there is no business as this meeting is specifically for some of the lakefront permits that have come before us in the last, I think the oldest are probably, this would be the second month that they've been before us. And first on the agenda is 2952 Lake Shore Drive, which is a stone revetment. I know that we talked about this at the last meeting. And one of the concerns was the natural ordinary high watermark. And we received from Diltara, or I'm not sure if that's the right name, Bob, is it Diltara?
Yeah, Diltaram.
A 150-page report from Diltara on the natural ordinary high watermark. So a lot of it is boilerplate, but it's, you can follow it through if you know the properties. And so after we got that report, in specific to this 2952, Joy and I had some conversation, actually texts and emails back and forth. And Joy went down to the site with an app on her phone. And Joy, maybe you could enlighten everybody as to what you basically found.
Well, according to the Diltara report, the ordinary high watermark would be at about 582, I think it was 581.81 feet altitude. So I went the altimeter app on my phone, and I really can't say how accurate that is. But ironically, so we're at 581 or 582 again. And at 2952, out where that buried seawall is, you can only see it, I think, if you look to the property to the west, you can barely see that old seawall sticking up above the ground. And that's about where 582 is. So everything they want to do is well behind that. And I think it's all well behind the 1066. I think the 106 might lie in the water there, I'm not sure. So that was my assessment.
Thanks, Joy. Work is at the existing steel sheet piling wall that Joy's talking about where the 582 is, is at about 125 to 130 feet. There is some bow in it, but if you follow it along there, it varies from 125 to 130 feet from the southern property line or the Lake Shore Drive side of the property line. The steel sheet piling wall that 2952 wants to put the stone in front of is at 78 feet. The stone revetment would be a maximum of 10 feet wide, which would put it at 88 feet. So it is still well behind the 106 line. And it would go in front of their property. I know that Bruce Woodruff had sent some pictures off, which everybody should have gotten yesterday from, through Deanna, that showed varying stages of where that property is, when you look to the east and west, when you look basically at the property, and it shows where the work is to be done. Also, and you may want to do it just on your computer, because all these jobs that we're talking about are on Lake Shore Drive, beacons photos, and I know we don't use beacon for survey purposes, but beacons photos are relatively new. And Google Earth Photos still have trees that have leaves, so they're hard to see. But beacons photos are taken in when there were no trees, or I'm sorry, when there were no leaves, and you can see the lines that Joy was talking about. The photos were taken after most of the temporary protections, Stop 23, Stop 21, and also the property of 2948 and this 2952 property was being damaged by the wave action. So if you're so inclined, it gives you a pretty good idea of where that line is that Joy's talking about.
Now Larry, did we get a site plan or permits from the DNR and Army Corps?
The permit from the DNR and the Army Corps actually was with both properties, the 2948 and the 2952 property. Unless I'm mistaken, I'm fairly certain that the permit came for both properties when it was submitted, because the drawings were done by the same engineering firm. What's the same as the Stop 20 and 21 drawings, or I'm sorry, Stop 21, 2060, and the Stop 29 engineering drawings were for a section of properties. I'd have to go back and double check that. I certainly can do that. I wouldn't want to take the time right now. But I certainly will do that. When our meeting's over, I can do it and send it off to you guys.
And as far as the site plan?
We did get a site plan.
Where's the site plan at, Larry?
The site plan came with the original permit when the jobs were going to be done together. I don't have the date for that. I'd have to look back in the emails and see when it was sent. I think the Vecchio or the 2948 job was done, that permit was probably from maybe July. So I'd have to look back through those to...
The permit, the permit number for Vecchio is 20-7-115.
Right, so I...
That permit only showed, because that's what we talked about, and I brought it up in the beginning, that permit only showed 2952 and the part of 2952 where 2948 was going to put the revetment. So that's only the side of the property. I have that diagram in front of me. I have no diagram that brings up all the numbers you guys just talked about, which all should be on the site plan. And I don't have any numbers at all that show where the east-west revetment is going to go. I know in an email that you received from Woodruff, which you, which you sent out to us on October 11, that, and he submitted six pictures, and in there, he submitted descriptions of each of the pictures, which is wonderful, it gives us a view, but we don't have a site plan, we don't have any place that recognizes where any of these numbers are that you stated, where the 78 feet is. We don't have any diagrams or site plans that have that. And we don't have anything that describes exactly where the revetment is going to go, how high the revetment is going to be, and how far the revetment is going to go out.
Well, actually, there is the original drawings that came, that were done, there are two drawings that came with that permit. One was from Ready Rock, which is the one that is colored, that has the yellow, shows the yellow Ready Rock stone and the stone revetment in front of it. The other was an engineering drawing from Doyle and Associates here in Michigan City, and that had all the dimensions on it for both houses.
Larry, are you talking about dimensions for 52 or dimensions for 49?
48.
48, I mean, I apologize, 48.
The, that, that plan from Doyle was, had both properties on it.
It doesn't have the complete property with dimensions. All it has is that one section that's right next to 48, and where the revetment was going to go on the 52 property. And it also shows about up to about where that driveway is, because they were concerned about a runoff into Lake Shore Drive. I don't have any documents, and I tried to save every damn thing I got, and I'll go over everything. I don't have any documents whatsoever that show that that seawall is 78 feet back, and exactly where the revetment's going to go on that seawall, and exactly what the height is, what is the height of the revetment, and what is the distance of the revetment to the lake.
Well, I think the email came on June 8.
Okay. Is that the one with the Doyle drawing, Joy?
Yeah, with the yellow line at 2948, yeah.
Well, okay, that, that right there, if that's what you're talking about, Larry, which shows absolutely nothing, is photograph two of the six photographs. If that's what you're resting your hand on, that shows no dimensions whatsoever.
No, this is not a photograph, it's a drawing.
It's a drawing. There's a, there's an actual drawing that is a site plan from John Doyle, who was a local engineer. He was the first involved in designing a stone revetment rather than the Ready Rock. And that was submitted along in Joy, it may be in that June timeframe. I will, I will have to go back and look it up. But that drawing had both properties, it had the 2948 property and the stone there, and then it had the continuation of the stone across the drive area where the parking lot is. And that is now they're requesting to continue that across the front of their steel sheet piling.
No, I, I agree on, now, we got apples to apples. I agree on the, on the site plan that we got for 2948. We do have, and that's what I talked about earlier, we do have 52 on here. And 52 is on here where they have that one section of the sheet piling that goes on an angle towards 48, and it shows where the driveway is. Yes, yes, we do have that. But that's all we have. We do not have anything that shows the rest of that seawall going east to west, all the way to the property, and it doesn't show anything about the revetment that's going in front of it.
That's right. That, that drawing, it shows the stone that goes across the driveway area.
Yes.
That, yes. So that is a scaled drawing that is dimensioned.
Okay. But that's just for that area. It doesn't extend out to the complete property of 52.
Right. And what they're requesting is, is to extend it across their entire front of their property.
I, I agree. And I don't see how, where they're putting it. I mean, we're going around in circles. I agree with everything you're saying.
So if you agree with what I'm saying, then you agree that the steel sheet piling wall is shown on the drawing?
The sheet piling wall is shown as part, a part of the sheet piling.
Right.
It's shown where the sheet is shown on the drawing.
Joe, can I speak without interrupting with you?
Well, you interrupted me, Larry.
Okay. Are you done?
No, yeah, for now.
So that drawing shows the existing sheet piling wall at 2952. It's, that drawing is to scale, it's dimensioned. It shows the stone coming across and going to the steel sheet piling wall. I agree with you. It doesn't show the entire length of that wall across 2952. What they're asking for is to continue where that stone is shown on the 2952 property across the front of their wall. There's no difference, that, that steel sheet piling wall didn't move from June to now. And the steel sheet piling, and the, the steel sheet piling is well behind the 106. We've established that it's well behind the natural ordinary high watermark. And what they're requesting is to continue the stone that is shown on that drawing across part of their property, all the way to the east side of their property.
And you, I think we're agreeing, and what I'm saying is, there's an assumption we're making, whatever it is, and I think a site plan should be there to prove that that sheet piling is there, number one, I don't know. And also, there's a picture, if you look at picture number six that they provided, I believe this is the sheet piling you're talking about, and there's a picture of it. But I would think, if we look at any of our view protection ordinances, that a site plan is required, and we don't have one.
Okay. I, I forget about the paperwork for a moment. I want to get agreement on what is being proposed here. And, and then if we get agreement on what being is proposed, we can get the site plan, we can get all the drawings. So when I look at the beacon map, I see 2952 as unprotected except for their little driveway that was used to protect 2948 or whatever it was. So the proposal, as I understand it, is to continue that seawall or that revetment straight across without going appreciably further out from where 2948 is, and straight across to the property to the east. And is that right? Yes. Okay. Wait a minute, just wait a minute, wait a minute. So, so that, that is what they want to do. And, and based on Diltara survey or whatever they did, that's well beyond, that's upward of the ordinary high watermark. So to me, it looks like the proposal, and I'm not talking about the paperwork at this point, then the proposal is correct, and, and it's approvable. Does anybody disagree with that?
I agree with Pete, Joy.
Okay. Anybody disagree with it?
I do. I need Peter. Do you have, do you have Paige, do you have the pictures?
I don't, I'm looking, I'm looking at the visuals on, on, what you call it, on beacon right here in front of me.
I'm, I'm looking at a picture that, that the builder provided us, which I think is more illuminating, and it probably supports your, your part more than mine, is a picture of a seawall. And I...
A revetment.
It's a picture of a seawall. Picture number six.
Okay, I, I've only got, all I have up right now is one thing.
Okay, I know. You're using beacon, which is not reliable source for us.
Why is it not reliable? It's a picture.
Because it says it right at the bottom. None of this should ever be used.
I'm not, I'm not going to take this to court. I'm looking for a theoretical approval of the concept that has been laid in front of us. Once we have that, we can decide, do we have enough paperwork that explains properly what it is? And as far as I can tell, nobody is disagreeing that the revetment will go from east to west, connecting the two existing revetments. Okay.
But I don't know what, okay. You guys can do anything you want. I'll, I'll just vote no, then I won't argue with you. But I don't see anything where this is going to go, how high it's going to go, how far out it's going to go. I don't see anything that delineates that.
Okay. Okay. It is not going out appreciably further than what is there. Now, as I said, the thing I wanted to get agreement on was the concept that the revetment would go in front of that protected property, unprotected property, from east to west.
It is protected by a seawall, Pete.
What?
That property is protected by a seawall. They want to put the revetment in front of the seawall that's, that, on that property, if you would understand it.
Well, okay. Very evident, Pete, when you look at exactly what you're talking about on beacon, which is why I suggested that we pull it up. And in my original, when I first said that, I said, we don't rely on that for survey purposes and lot line purposes, because it's not reliable. But it's a overhead satellite picture of what is there existing. And it shows the, the area, if you look at it, if everybody would bring it up, you'll see exactly what Pete is talking about. So, and I agree with Pete. So let's, Joe, you've, you've had a say, Joy, you've had a discussion. Bob, do you have anything to this, to say?
I've heard the discussion.
Okay. John Coker? Unmute yourself, John. You have to unmute yourself, John.
Yeah, you hear me now?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, I agree with Pete. I understand what they're trying to do.
Okay. Lou?
Non-voting member.
No, but you understand what they're asking to do?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So everybody understands what the proposal is?
I don't.
Okay. Everybody but Joe understands what the proposal is. So we have to take a step. Now, we either say we all understand, you know, except for Joe, we understand the proposal. We can make a motion to accept and issue the permit and require additional information. We can accept the permit as presented and grant it. We can deny the permit. You know, we can't just continue to have the same discussion every month. The people need some decision. Okay, I make a motion that we conditionally approve the permit based on receipt of appropriate site plan and drawings with the ordinary high watermark delineated on it, and the extent of the seawall with the height of the seawall and whatever else that we need to close this baby out.
I'll second that.
Okay. Any other discussion? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? No? Okay. Next up is 3006 Lake Shore Drive, which we talked about at the last meeting. They provided a drawing that had the natural ordinary high watermark on it. And has everybody had a chance to look at those? So what they're asking to do is, there is an existing, this is a vacant lot that is owned by the, the people that live to the east. And there is some stone revetment there that is about at their concrete, existing concrete and steel sheet piling wall. What they're asking to do, so there is stone there now, but there is not steel sheet piling. What they're asking to do is drive steel sheet piling and install stone revetment in front of that steel sheet piling. We do, I happen to have a paper copy, but there are, the drawings were sent to everybody electronically as well.
Yeah. Could we look at C-02? That's, that's one of the drawings? Yeah, I'm looking at it. Okay. And I just wanted to make sure I was reading this correctly. If we look at this one that says, "Proposed cross-section A." Yeah. Okay. And as I'm looking at it, so they're putting in the sheet piling, we see that. I believe they want to put a concrete cap on top of the sheet piling. Yes. And I also believe it's not on this diagram, but from being there and from talking, I believe that, that concrete cap is going to be in line with the rest of the work that they have in front of the, the other properties that they own. Have you viewed the same thing?
Say that again. The, yes, the cap, if you look at the drawing above that, right, proposed site plan, and you'll see that that is in line with, it's very faint, but it's in line with other... Existing in the new concrete area.
Right. I just wanted to verify that, because I was there and I saw everything. Now, the, the point of my question, I'll get to it real fast, is I want to make sure I'm interpreting the rest of the diagram, where they're putting in revetment in lackward of the seawall. And the seawall is, I couldn't get where it is, but they do have dimensions and everything in here. And it is well back. And I'm just interpreting, if I read this right, Larry, that on the diagram where they have those beautiful big boulders, and to the far left, it says, "Existing ground, verifies." Do you see where I'm talking about there?
I'm, no, I'm looking for it.
Right at the, right at the, at the, by proposed cross-section A, and if you go all the way at the bottom and go...
Elevation varies, 586 to 587.
Right, right. Now, the, the thing that looks like, if I'm reading that, that line that's going across, cutting into the seawall and cutting into the revetment, it looks like the majority of the revetment, if I'm reading this correctly, is going to be buried in the sand. Am I correct?
Yes. Well, when you say the majority of it, that, where you see the smaller stone, you know, they have blading stone, whatever, so...
And then you see the line going...
That's like a footing for the, the larger stone.
Yes, yes. And then, Larry, that line going through it, that's all I'm trying to, that line going through it, I believe is an estimate of the line of the sand. Is that correct?
Hey, this is Carl. Yes, that, that line would be an approximate elevation of the existing sand out there.
Right. So like I say, you know, 50/50, at least half, half of the revetment is going to be buried in the sand.
Correct.
Okay. That, that, that was my question. And I believe, what is it, Carl, if we have it, I don't know, a number, but that number of that's, of the other two that are abutting the seawall, half is below and the other half, the other part is above. That's probably about maybe two or three feet on the seawall. Is that about right? That's exposed?
Yeah, probably, probably closer to three. Like on the, the adjacent property, there's probably about three foot of that wall exposed.
Okay. And that's, and that's what the seawall is. And this, this revetment is going out about plus or minus seven feet.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
I have a question. 3006 Lake Shore Drive, is that the right address? It's, you know, it's a vacant lot, Pete. I, I don't know that it actually has an address.
Oh, it's listed as 3008, I think.
You know, then that, that is probably, I'm looking at the beacon thing right now, so let me pull it up.
Pete, just to...
You're not done.
I, I looked at it, and it's confusing because I believe, not that we're experts, but I believe you shouldn't have two properties that had the same address. And it looks like they made a mistake because both properties have the same address.
It is listed, Joe or Pete, and, and Joe, at 3008 on the, the beacon site. But it's a vacant property that was owned by a guy across the street, and he sold it to the people that own 3010, I think is their address. Okay, so these lots would have to be combined if that's the case. Yes, no? OK.
I mean, is it thirty ten, the guy that bought it?
No, thirty oh eight.
Thirty oh eight bought, OK.
That's what I'm saying, Pete, it seems confusing. There are two thirty oh eights.
Right.
Property is listed as thirty oh eight, and I think somebody just made a mistake. I so and just answer your other question and I'll be quiet for a minute. That I don't believe it needs to be combined because of the type of work that is being done.
I I don't, I'm not going to get into that issue. Now, now I want to just make sure I was on the right property.
Yes, you are, Pete.
This revetment is not going to be beyond the natural ordinary high watermark. And it's going to be no wider than it is now.
Well, that's the goal on the drawing that I see, that it would be no wider than it is now. And the the revetment that is there is like a lot of the revetments that are along Lake Shore Drive that are now being uncovered. There's, for lack of a better term, strewn about. You know, at one point in time, they were installed and they, a lot of times, when the existing revetments were installed, they didn't have bedding stone and they didn't have the smaller stone to lock them together. They were just larger stone that was put down there. And it appears that's what this was. Carl, I guess I'd ask you to confirm that. So what they would do is they would not only take the what is existing there and reuse it, but they put a proper bedding stone, some people call it matric stone, and then filter cloth, and then lock the smaller and the larger stones together so that there's less opportunity for the stone, the larger stones to move.
Yeah, for all practice, for practical purposes, we're replacing the stone in place. So where it's at out there, we'll dig it out, put that mattress stone in and and put it back. So we're not planning on extending it or going any wider.
Are we going any higher?
Ah, I like like Larry said, at one time, I'm sure when it was originally placed, it was probably up at this height, but it's been, you know, splashed around or whatever and and lowered and deteriorated, so.
So are we going any higher than the?
It's not going higher than that, the the wall next to it, whatever that five ninety is or whatever.
Well, it's your question, it's not going to go higher than the steel sheet piling wall and the concrete cap. It's going to be new, which is at the same elevation as the concrete cap next to it.
Correct. Yeah, the the one to the west is higher, yes, right?
Yes, the one to the west is higher, the one to the east is the property owner, and it would be at the same elevation as their existing wall.
And and when we talk about the cap, we're not planning on putting any other cap, just the cap that exists on the property to the west, yes?
Yeah, we'll match that, the same cap that's to the to the east.
We're talking about the east, Pete, not the west.
Yeah, yeah, I'm sorry, I'm upside down. Yeah, you got it.
It's a two foot wide concrete cap at the.
Well, it's it's total about five is what's out there to the east.
Five what?
Five feet wide, the the concrete.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Five foot, two of it will be deeper, more reinforced to help stabilize the steel wall.
Yeah, I understand. I I think it's the right thing to do. As long as it doesn't go out any further than it is.
OK, anybody else? Bob, John, Joe, Joy?
I make a motion to approve as long as we have the the appropriate paperwork.
OK, is there a second?
I'll second, Joy.
Any other discussion? Be none. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. What's up, Joe?
I'm still here.
Did you say aye?
Aye.
Holy Christ. OK, we'll move on to the next one.
Might be the last one you hear, but that's OK.
OK.
Wait a minute, I'm going to get a beer.
OK. Beer, that's a champagne moment, pal. Twenty sixty Lake Shore Drive. This twenty sixty and stop twenty one in the twenty one club are somewhat, not somewhat, pretty much intertwined. It's it's what's being proposed when it would be all done would be a continuous ready rock wall like a twenty nine forty eight, which is the Vecchio property. It's just west of the one that we were talking about, twenty nine fifty two. So we do not have the DNR permit yet. But because of the town's involvement in both the Stop twenty ones, twenty one club, as well as the Stop twenty three, we thought it was appropriate to discuss this because everybody does have the drawings that were presented for this. So what? Let's start at the east side or west side of this twenty sixty property. The twenty sixty property on the west side, has everybody seen the twenty sixty property and seen the damage? That's the one with the pool on it. So basically, the the entire front of that, the front thirty to forty five feet is gone. The land is gone, the 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 concrete decks and patios and retaining walls that were placed there. The the front seawall, it's another wall that was improperly built, failed and washed out and eroded underneath forty five feet by eighty. And it's continued to erode. There's been some temporary measures taken to try to stop that erosion while permanent measures were being considered. When this ready rock thing came up, there's been lots of discussion about how to protect Stop twenty one. And because it's their contiguous properties, how is it going to affect, how is twenty sixty going to affect Stop twenty one? So the owners of Stop twenty, or pardon me, the owners of twenty sixty have decided, I mean, what originally, they could have, in the original proposal that they thought about was, they were just going to repair their wall. The steel sheet piling wall that was put there that everybody's aware of that went way out into the lake to protect the pool. And the owners don't like it, so they decided, look, can you put shore protection south of that existing steel sheet piling wall with a concrete cap and still protect our property? And then pull that sheet piling, which basically gives back right now about thirty feet of thirty to forty feet total of beach to the town or to the public, I guess, is the right term by what they're proposing now, so that the ready rock stone would go up the east side from where the old pool deck was to approximately the house. That's what's shown on the drawings that you have. Then there's an old wood or pardon me, concrete wall that is on the vacant property next to it that extends from, which I think, I'm pretty sure I sent you guys pictures several months ago, that shows that wall in the six, late sixties and seventies, when the the old, everybody calls it the Fithian House, it was owned by somebody else in the sixties, but they bought it in the seventies, shows the concrete wall and their stone in front of it. There's not actually zone, it's there's some zone, but there's also a lot of broken concrete. So once in in meeting with these people and and the contractors would have looked, we looked at where that concrete wall is and said, well, you should really maintain that, the integrity of that wall, because that wall was protecting that property since anything was built there. And so what the proposal is, is to go and and install the ready rock directly in front of that existing concrete wall, return it to the east now, and then come back and turn it towards the south and connect it to a a ready rock wall or continuous wall that would go in front of Stop twenty one to protect that public access as well as the Stop twenty one club. I can't speak, I know John Wall's on here, and I think Bob may have been privy to and Chris, some conversations and discussion that has taken place with the Stop twenty one club about whether or not they can afford to protect their property. It certainly doesn't make sense for the town to go in and protect Stop twenty one in Lake Shore Drive there and leave that forty foot of open section to the east of Stop twenty one that would go over to Fester's property, which is twenty oh two, I think, or twenty one oh two, excuse me. So that's the drawing that you see, that continuous wall that has all that fabric, which is the the black dotted lines that are behind there are fabric that is used to stabilize the wall after, while it's being installed. And then there would be stone riprap put in front of that. That's the proposal. It, the proposal wouldn't change, that's what's been submitted to the DNR for their approval. And the the same type of wall, we don't have the drawings yet, is being proposed for Stop twenty three.
Well, what is, once again, what is the status of the Stop twenty one people?
The twenty one club, I I think I'd probably have to ask Chris or I'll speak to that.
This is Chris. I at at John Wall's direction, I have been in contact with and received a draft of easement documents so that the the town could work out what its projected plan is. And we've sent some comments back, the only, so we we've been back and forth. I'm actually waiting for a response to our reply. I don't think there are many material changes. And as brought up by John, we, the only other thing we wanted to make sure is that some language, mutual indemnification languages that we had in there, made sure that they were reconciled with the town's insurance. And and John Jones, as always, has been on top of it and and went to the carrier, and we got some feedback from them. So as they did yesterday, I was communicating with Mr. Hale. And ultimately, I I don't think that we're far off in terms of the terms of the agreement, which would allow for easement on behalf of the town to not only install, but also maintain in the future.
So what would, what would the easement cover? The wall, the block?
Yeah, the 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 proposed project, yeah, so the the revetment, everything that's there, that easement, and then some additional, some additional land or footage, for lack of a better description, that would allow access and the ability to maintain it in the future. And it's in perpetuity, so it'll be recorded and it will be something of record.
Pete, the easement defines it as the wall, the the required land for the wall and ten feet beyond that landward of the wall, when I say wall, the ready rock revetment. And it also allows for a temporary easement of an additional twenty five feet landward of that permanent ten foot easement for the construction work. So essentially, they're giving us an easement for construction and also a permanent easement that allows us to access the wall itself and a ten foot area behind it so that we can maintain it.
So is it just for the purposes of maintain maintenance?
Well, essentially, but yeah, there there are some other terms in there that we're in the process of negotiating right now. There we, there were some language in there that I had some issues with. Chris is, again, negotiator, you know, this is a dynamic situation. We're not finished with the negotiation yet. We've just been trying to push it. It took them a while. You know, we we got to them, gave them some information, they get back to their membership. They have like twenty five individuals, so they had to get back to their membership. They presented us with the ease, the first draft of easement document. Chris and I reviewed it, we made some changes and sent it back to Steve, and that's where it sits right now.
In in this document, does it say who's going to pay for this work?
Yeah, they don't have anywhere with all, Joe, it's it's up to us. If we didn't have some sort of an agreement with this property, we would have to return our wall to Lake Shore Drive, lose probably half of our lot doing that, and then hope for the best with their lot and then sue them later or something if it destroyed Lake Shore Drive. I don't know the legal ramifications, but that would be a pretty ugly picture if we.
OK, but but.
There's one more in there, Joe, is, you know, the the condemnation, right? It's the other options, which is a way more expensive endeavor. So those, just throwing out to answer your questions and 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 as John said, that this would be on the the town's dime, for lack of a better description, and ultimately to, so that you're not throwing good money after bath. And so it's one of those resolutions where the town doesn't have to go through and and consider those options, maybe shorting the project and not and not fully protecting, or two, having to go through a much more expensive endeavor of trying to turn that into town property.
And and have we, as the town, ever had any difficulties with using a part of their property down by the beach? Have we ever gotten any issues there?
I'm not aware of any, Joe. Somebody would have to inform me, but I'm not aware of any. They've always been a very cooperative bunch. Essentially, philosophically, they have no intention of selling it in their in their bylaws. Actually, there's a document, I'm I'm sure Steve would be willing to share that with us. But when they set that thing up, they they have some language in there about what's allowed and what's not allowed for the future. We can, we can probably make that part of the negotiation if we want to. But again, we we don't, the problem is, there's twenty five individuals on their side of this equation. And we don't have the luxury of, you know, months long negotiations here if we're trying to get this in before winter.
And Joe, just to add to that, I think the benefit of this easement is it is of record and it's permanent. So it's not like just permission or verbal or a license that can be taken away. This, as long as the the town is installing and maintaining, this is in perpetuity. So even if they did sell it, any future buyers are going to be subject to this easement of record.
And and Chris, maybe I'm asking too much, but couldn't we also include in the easement maybe some footage towards the lake?
Well, I I I think that just depends on what the where the where the property goes. And I I would probably have to defer, I I think that it.
Let me, let me clarify a little bit, Joe. The the way we see this, the delineator that came down that we paid, the town paid money for to delineate our town lots, including twenty one, twenty three, and twenty nine, has already done her delineation. We had a rough idea when she was there that day after she she did her homework about where that lies. And essentially, this wall is right at or landward of the ordinary high watermark as she delineated it. So they don't own anything beyond where this wall will be in the long run, either way.
It's the only thing, John, and and maybe it's a mistake, but on the diagram that I'm looking at, which is R two of the diagrams that we got, they're delineating a natural ordinary high watermark, which is way way out by the lake, I mean, much further towards the lake.
On on the on the Stop twenty one property, the twenty sixty property?
On the Stop twenty one property.
Let me see if I can get the drawing.
Do you see that? I'm looking at R two is the diagram I'm looking at.
You see that, I'm looking at, R2 is the diagram I'm looking at.
Sorry, you know what, and the reason that there's a difference there is, one was done by the engineer who drew the, uh, the plans, and the other was done by Del Terra. The Del Terra is the one that's closer to the Lake Shore Drive spot.
Because if, if I'm reading Del Terra correctly, the average they came up with is 584.82. That's on page seven of their report.
So, one, one, one thing I think in this overall discussion, Joe, if we get up to the 30,000 view rather than staying in the weeds, this ordinary high watermark definition, which has been, you know, what we based our Supreme Court decision on, and we're all, you know, you know my history on that, that varies by the lake levels and the forefront dune accretion and all the different things that happen over time. So, it's, it's part, part of this whole discussion, in, in terms of what the town council needs to address with our ordinances and everything else in, in the big picture, that ordinary high watermark delineation is gonna vary over time. One, one thing I think we need to be cognizant of is if that lake goes down and that Ford dune reestablishes itself like it did at stop 20 and stop 21, basically at stop 20, I'm very familiar with, that scrub line's gonna move out toward the lake. And then you're gonna have a situation where you're gonna have homeowners, if, if we hold that ordinary high watermark to the Supreme Court definition, you're gonna have homeowners that are gonna have the ability, based on that, that, uh, definition, to push out farther lakeward than what you might like. So I think we need to be cognizant of this absolute definition of the ordinary high watermark, based on our, our ordinances and the Supreme Court case, needs to be tempered with the discussions with the DNR and the legislature downstate, and we have to make a good, intelligent decision about where that line actually is. So, same, we, we had discussions ad infinitum on that, I just think we need to be practical-minded and reasonable about how we define where we're gonna place these walls and whether, where they sit relative to the ordinary high watermark. I know this is a little off-subject for this particular permit application, but I, I know where you're going, Joe, and I think we just have to be, you know, I've had some conversation with Mr. Lemay and myself, Dr. Lemay and myself, and I think, uh, I need to do that with John, but I think in the overall, my position is that we need to have some flexibility about where that line actually is. You go back historically and look at older pictures, obviously, the Ford dune was out in the lake five years ago or so, you know, and the ordinary high watermark now is closer to the shore, I understand that, but reasonably, we have to make some decisions based on where practically it makes sense to have these walls put in.
John, do we, do we have an estimate of the cost for this now?
Not yet.
And, and do we have an idea of where else might be vulnerable for this type of situation? I know we're vulnerable at 23, um, that sort of thing, but do we?
Part, part of the problem with getting numbers, Pete, is definitive number, and, and this is another, I'm gonna bring it up now, where there's another elephant in the room, so we're out of time. We, we don't have the luxury of another couple of months worth of negotiation, or a couple of months worth of fitting document generation and a whole lot more process, we are essentially out of time. So, um, I, I will say this, there may be some other areas, I've seen seawalls that are cracking, and depending on what the lake does to them this year, we could have all kinds of new situations, I, I don't know where they may be, they may not have any, I hope none, but you're, you're raising a great point, I, I don't know where they may be, but as far as definitive costs, you don't get definitive costs until you present bid documents for a contractor to bid on. These documents that you're looking at relative to 2060 and 21 are pretty definitive at this point, we can get some numbers now, but there's no sense doing a circle jerk here, if we're gonna deny this particular proposed situation, and, and then there's no sense going out for hard numbers and trying to base our decisions on those hard numbers. The town council needs to see numbers, but you people need to give us an idea of what you're gonna allow so that we can have the contractors give us some numbers. It's just, it's continual round and round, we go catch 22 sort of situation, we, we don't, we, we have no longer had time for that kind of thing.
Pete, uh, to, to answer your question, as far as my observations have been over the last, you know, since October of last year, and seeing what's happened, there's four spots right now, there are public access spots that are, uh, in pretty rough shape. Uh, stop 21, which includes the stop 21 club property, which we're talking about right now. Stop 23 is probably the most severe, that we are in the, the most, is in the most dire straits and the most jeopardy, and is, if we don't do something, along with John's point, if we don't do something permanent, we will be there, like we were last year, putting more temporary measures, you know, another $100,000 into throwing concrete barriers or whatever down there that will have to be removed. The next stop is, uh, stop 29, uh, which I sent you pictures of this morning, uh, that shows where that's, I mean, obviously, we know that it's taken away some of the steps, now it's actually eating back, uh, and that's on the list down the line here, but, uh, stop 29 is now getting to the point where it's gonna march, if we have the same situation we had last year, it's gonna continue to march back towards the street level. And then at stop 28, uh, you've got the same thing, right now, there's two trees, one in particular is the only thing that's stopping, the root system of that tree, which is one of the pictures I sent you this morning, is the only thing that's stopping the water from advancing, uh, up to the stairs at stop 28. Uh, now, there is also at stop 28, which wasn't visible up until probably a couple of weeks ago, uh, there is, uh, some old revetment riprap, uh, which is, uh, broken concrete slabs that are down there. Uh, so those are the four stops that need attention. Uh, we, the, the way we've got it right now, or not we've got it, the way the proposal is right now, the 2060 job is integral to the stop 21, because obviously, if failure stopped at the 2060 property, we've got failure or actually nothing at stop 21, so that is an integral or an integral wall that would be continuous to go through there, whether that was stone riprap, ready rock, steel sheet piling, uh, you know, those were the three choices. The, uh, stop 23 is, is the same thing, there's three choices there, steel sheet piling, uh, stone revetment, which is the shot rock that we've all talked about, or the ready rock. We're having the, right now, we're asked, we have asked the engineer from the ready rock people to design a wall there that has steps integral to that wall, so that we would not have to continually build wood steps as the water i- in the sand, uh, you know, the evulsion takes place and then, uh, you know, the accretion and then the subsequent erosion that takes place, we would always have steps that would be on that wall. At some point in time, they may be completely covered up, but we would always have steps at 23. Uh, right now, the way the 29 situation is, is that there are three properties there that need help, private properties that need help. We have discussed with them, they, they don't have access, so the discussion with them has been, which I'm pretty sure most everybody's aware of, look, if you, if, if we provide you access, their only access is through town property that's owned on either side of them, either at stop 29 or west of the end property, the Osborne property, which is also town property. And so, in discussion, there's been no agreement, there's no, nothing signed that's still in, in, in the discussion or negotiation phase, was if we allow you access through our property and you return our property, meaning the town's property, to its current condition or better, and we allow you access, you would pay for the protection of the town's property. The same thing at stop 28, uh, and, and that would be paid for by property owners that are, there's one to the west and then the others, that this whole process would take place at one time. Uh, uh, not really a process, but it, it is a process where you would protect the stop 29 property, the Fortman property, the Lupiani property actually has its own stone, but it's, it's been shuffled around, that would be reset, the Osborne property would be protected, and then the two town lots to the west of the Osborne property would be protected, and then the two access lots at stop 28 would be protected as well, at no cost to the town. Uh, so tho- those are the four good properties that we have, and, I mean, in a nutshell, we don't have all, we do have the drawings for all but stop 23 right now.
I'd like to make one quick point, I know I'm not on the committee, I apologize, but I want everybody to be aware of the fact that we've spent a couple of months waiting for the delineations that our ordinances require. So, the reason we're into this position we are in terms of timeframe, is we're trying to follow our ordinances religiously and do, and dot every I and cross every T, and it's got us into a position now where we are completely out of time. So I just want everybody to be aware of that, that it, it's not something we drag our feet on, you couldn't, you know, you couldn't authorize, it's, it's such a catch 22, you can't authorize the, the engineers that make drawings because you didn't have delineation, and, and it's just, our ordinances are forcing us into a, a black hole.
Excuse me, have, have we ever gotten anything back from the Army Corps of Engineers on the delineation? I thought that was part of the delineation process, that they would evaluate the delineation.
Our ordinances do not require that the delineation be authorized by the Army Corps.
I'm not saying our ordinances require that, but I think that's the standard procedure for the delineator.
No, we don't have time for that, Joe.
Not gotten anything back from the Army Corps of Engineers through Del Terra. The Army Corps of Engineers has issued permits on the stop 29, uh, lot areas in 28. Uh, the DNR has approved of those, has approved those projects as presented, and the Army Corps has, has approved those projects as presented. And, but we have the, as, as far as the delineation, no, we don't have that, and we don't get that, that's actually Del Terra gets that.
And that's exactly what I was talking about, is, has, have they gotten it yet? And have they shared it with us? That was my question.
No, we have not gotten it.
Okay.
So regarding 2060, you know, it looks to me like this is a plan that involves three properties, and before we can agree to proceed forward with it, we need to have an agreement from the stop 21 club, because to do just 2060 and not do stop 21 or the 21 club's property just isn't an option. Um, so I would think we need to get that agreement, and pending that, and once that agreement is obtained, this plan should be approved, and I'd make that motion.
So just to be clear though, are you making a motion subject to getting the finalized?
Correct.
Yeah, so it's not being held over.
Say it again?
So it's not being held over, and I, I'm not concerned about getting that agreement in place, cause that, we're, we're eminent, so I just wanted to make sure you were making a motion to approve, but subject to having that agreement finalized, cause it'll still have to be by the council.
I'll second that motion, Joy.
Seconded to you.
Okay. I'm sorry, I'm not the shorthand man here, subject to agreement, stop 21, uh, seconded by Joy. Uh, any other discussion?
Question?
I want everybody to understand that it is, we are seeking the DNR's permit right now, so that would be for all three of those properties. Uh, stop 23, I haven't sent it in yet because we don't have the drawings yet.
Question?
Yeah.
Uh, I'm just curious if we ever got any material from the ready rock people, that they say that their, uh, uh, whatever it's called, uh, equip, not equipment, their, their walls always need, uh, rip, riprap or whatever it's called, revetment in front of them, where they don't function properly without the, the, uh, uh, whatever it's called, I can't even, I get all my glasses on.
Revetment.
Without the revetment, is that why it's always there, or is the revetment there for an extra? I'm, I'm just trying to understand, and, and I know, I know it's easy for a guy like me, because I know Larry, John, the rest of you, you're out there, you were there all winter and everything else, I understand all of that, and I appreciate all of it, but I'm just wondering, looking at things, is, is there a point where, you know, this might be the Cadillac to do, but there's also maybe a Chevy that could be done that would also hold up and, and do a good job? Because we don't know, and that's, that's the tough part for all of us, we don't know what the good Lord or the good lake, whatever you wanna call it, the Lord or the lake, what, what the lake has in mind. And we don't know if the lake's gonna go further, if it's gonna go back, if it's gonna go forward, we don't know what the winter's gonna bring. If the winter's gonna bring an ice, a, a shelf like this year, where it didn't last year. So all I'm asking is, I, that's what I'm asking, I'm asking.
Yeah, I, I can address that, Joe. It, it, there's, it, it's a good question, you know, if you, if you, if you're not in the, this type of business. Uh, so what happens is, you, an engineer comes and, and looks at the project and takes a look at the soil borings, takes a look at where, where the property is, and comes back and says, okay, I think our system's gonna work. And then they, they sit down and this design work, uh, costs over $20,000 for the drawings that you see before you, and that was paid for by the 2060 owner. So, what that engineer said was, and he did the same thing at the Vecchio property, 2948, he said, here's my design for this wall, in order for this wall to work properly, you have to install a stone revetment in front of it. Uh, so, we, that's, that's what the engineer said. I, I don't think there's anybody on here that's an engineer except for Carl Tungate, uh, who's not gonna certainly give us his opinion on it, because he didn't design it. So then we take that design and we say, okay, you're gonna stand behind us, that means that he's liable for that. If that fails, or there's a failure, then he's responsible for that failure. So, if, if we say to him, well, hey, why don't we do this without putting a stone in front of it? And he says, look, you can do whatever you want, but this is what my recommendation is. We've taken his recommendation and presented it to the homeowner as well as the town of you guys right now. I would not advise our group to modify it at all, because we modify it, or if we suggest modifications to it, then we have muddied the waters for the liability of that design, right now rests on the engineer.
Larry, I am, I am not, in any stretch of imagination, suggesting that because Joe Jagman thinks this, we should modify any plans, I'm not suggesting that at all. What I am suggesting though, possibly, and I know you guys are talking about time, but I am suggesting possibly, maybe there's a second opinion that we could receive from an engineer, somebody that, and just to get an idea, I'm just surprised.
Yes.
That this ready rock company, which it seems like a beautiful system, would say, it's a good system, but you know what, it, it's not a good standalone system. I don't know that, I agree with you, I'm just, I don't know.
We have that option, and, and I, I'm not trying to cut you short, but we do have other things to talk about. We do have that option of going out and getting a second opinion, that second opinion will cost, and I can guarantee you that the homeowner will not pay for it, that second opinion will. That second opinion will most likely cost the town $20,000 to $25,000. We would have to go to the town council, get approval from the town council, to spend that $25,000. Go find an engineer that will do it and do it in a timely manner. It took, for this engineer, knowing he's got three projects that he can, may be able to do for the town, it took us eight or 10 weeks to get this design. And that was with constant prodding and constant pushing. We're constantly prodding and pushing for the Stop 23 design. So I'm not going to disagree with you and say, no, you shouldn't get a second opinion. You certainly can. From the Ready Rock people, you're not going to get any other opinion, because this is an engineer that the Ready Rock people have selected. That's who designs their systems. And I think John can attest, I don't know if Carl knows, the engineering firm, it's a fairly large concern. I can't even remember the name of the firm. So yes, we could go out and hire somebody else. That's really up to the town council. Right now, there's a proposal before the building commission for what's been presented. I personally would not ask for a second opinion. If you want to get somebody to give you a second opinion, I would ask them to design something else. Because nobody can design the Ready Rock because they're not licensed to do that.
Yeah, I got some... I have a couple of quick questions here. For stops 21 and 23, for the solutions for those, when we talk about steps, we want to make sure that those steps are internal to the seawall somehow, you know?
Right, that's...
We don't want them hanging over and then causing problems with other homeowners that were privating from putting steps over the seawall.
No, it's actually part of the seawall. They would be parallel to Lake Shore Drive. It would come down at an angle on the wall. So they would be protected behind and in front, and they would be embedded in the wall itself.
That's good. That's perfect. The other question I have regarding 2060, 2060 is a private residence.
Right.
Is there... The solution that's in front of us, if we were not to build the stuff across 21, would that the solution for 2060 still be the same?
The solution for 2060 would be similar to what you've seen, but there would have to be, he would have to do something where, if you look at the drawing, which I'm going to pull up, so I won't be able to... Well, you guys can still see me. If you look at the drawing on the east side, where the wall turns and comes across into the public property, he would have to return that wall back to probably the dotted line midway on his house to make sure that he was protected.
Okay, so all I'm asking is, or questioning is, do we need to put any permit approval for 2060 in front of the town council? Or can we do it? It seems to me that the only thing we need to go to the town council with is the wall across 21.
That's correct. The 2060 is totally in our purview without the town council.
Okay, so then I'd like to modify the proposal to say, we approved 2060 permit. And that the 21 seawall goes in front of the town council as well as 23 when we get there. So just keep that in.
Is that okay with you, Bob? You made the motion.
I really like the idea of linking the two. I think that to put in just what they want to do at Stop 2060, and then elongating that return wall would simply hasten the demise of Stop 21. And then maybe Lake Shore Drive. Understand what I'm saying, Pete?
Unfortunately, I have one of these scam calls coming in, but whatever you guys decide, just as long as we're doing it in the right order.
Okay. John Cooper?
Yeah, I agree with Bob Lemay. You know, we ought to approve it subject to Chris getting the easement in place. And once the easement's in place, then go forward.
Joy?
I agree with that as well.
I figured you seconded it. Joe?
I just want to make one comment before I say anything else. And John, I'm not trying to be antagonistic whatsoever, John Wall, but I want to caution all of us to be very careful that we're going to start interpreting what the Indiana Supreme Court did. I'll leave it at that.
Since there's no more discussion, all those in favor of the motion, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? No?
Larry, one quick comment. You know, the town council hasn't seen the numbers yet. We've got a bond amount that we're dealing with for money to spend on all of our stops. So just be aware that the caveat to your approval here is that the town needs to see some numbers so that we understand what we're going to expend if we go with this thing.
I think those are going to be coming fairly quickly at the Stop 21 situation. The 23 we'll have when the drawings come. Let's move on to the Stop 23. You know, I don't know, it's really the exact same thing as we just talked about. We don't have anything to really approve, but I just want to make sure that everybody's aware of, you know, what we need to do. And it would be the exact same discussion that we would have, that we've just had for the Stop 23 situation because of, you know, what's happening. And the three alternatives there are, actually, there's four. Continue to throw, you know, broken concrete and sandbags, you know, temporary stuff down there. Second would be steel sheet piling, which probably is not aesthetically pleasing to most people. Third is the Ready Rock. Fourth is the stone revetment. So as soon as we get those drawings, we'll bring that back to the building commission. But again, you know, I just don't want to... I want to, rather than keep stretching this out, as soon as we get the information, I'd like to bring it back. And if we need to have a meeting, we can get going on it. So we can try to get the stuff done right away. The last things on the agenda, and these are the ones that I talked about earlier, that are all pretty much tied together as one process. And, you know, as I often say to my own clients, construction is not an event, it's a process. So we have a permit before us. It's been before us for, I think, two months prior to this meeting, or two meetings, excuse me. One was in discussion, the second time was the actual permit, which we discussed last month, was the Stop 29, the Vortman, Lupiani, Osborne, and the Stop 28 situation. And I've already gone over what those proposals are. You guys have seen that. The next step outside of our approval or denial of the permit, or suggested modifications or whatever you want to call them, is the negotiation between the town council and those owners. And not just involving use of town property for access, but as everybody's aware, there's some open litigation that is being discussed in that same negotiation. And I know that there is a proposed meeting next week to meet with the owners to discuss that end of it. So we really don't have, I guess, a vote on that. You know, what that would be, that would be the town council for the approval of use of the property. What we do have, what we can vote on would be, or discuss would be, the actual proposal, which is the stone revetment. And at the last meeting, we talked about, I think, one of the main objections was that the stone was being put all the way out at the old steel sheet piling wall, the WPA wall or whatever. We've talked to, I've talked to the engineer, Darryl from Edgewater. I've talked to one of the homeowners. And I know that the contractor, Bruce Woodruff, has talked to both of the homeowners about moving that stone revetment back, back meaning towards the Lake Shore Drive side or the property side. The front of the deck at the Vortman property is at about the 123 mark. And I don't know if you remember back when we voted to allow them to put that concrete grade beam underneath there, that we allowed that because it was at the 123 mark, that concrete grade beam. I'm sorry, Pete, go ahead.
I don't have anything.
The pictures I sent off this morning, which are indicative of what's happened, what has happened and what is happening up and down Lake Shore Drive is that it's a dynamic situation. There's nothing static about it. Three or four weeks ago, there was 15 feet of sand out in front of that old steel sheet piling wall. Now the water's back up against it. It's probably about three or four feet deep. There's also stone riprap, not only big slabs, some of those slabs of concrete are half as big as a semi truck that were exposed, as well as some, you can see some of the rock that was down there. So sometime years ago, there were stone revetments down there that have moved, like on the Lupiani property. So the proposal is, is to rebuild those, take that stone and rebuild a proper revetment, just like the Stop 30 property with the bedding stone, then proper filter cloth, the bedding stone, larger stone, smaller stone intertwined so that, you know, the angular parts of the stone lock together so they don't move. If you just have all large stone, it has more of a tendency to move when it's under duress or under the energy of the waves. By far, the furthest erosion point has been the Stop 29 property. And when you look at that, there's been a lot of discussion about... Let me see if I can pull that up. There's been a lot of discussion about where the stop is and where the, let's call it the Vortman property is with the deck across there. The largest portion of the area that's being proposed to put stone in front of, between the Vortman and the Lyons property, which is the property to the east of the town access, is town property. And that is being eroded more so rather than the other sections, because there is more... Somebody did protect the private property with stone. But there is not, you can see in those pictures that I sent off this morning, that there is not any stone there on the Stop 29 access property. And then coupled with that, and again, as I said, it's a process, is you go and look at the pictures I sent of Stop 28, and it would be the same stone revetment that would be put there. But now, which we didn't realize, there are riprap, large sections of riprap that have been exposed at Stop 28, which are well beyond where the protection would go. So that would be, the proposal would be modified to include moving those up to a better protection or an actual revetment, rather than just haphazardly laying there, as you can see in Anybody have any discussion or thoughts?
No, I think we need to have those negotiations. And if it's okay with you, I'll try and set them up for next week. If it's okay with you, I'll hopefully have John Wall, Larry Wall, Chris Willoughby, myself, and the homeowners and whoever they want to bring. Does that sound reasonable?
Yeah, that sounds fine. And, you know, I can let them know, or if you want to have conversations with them. I think you've already had some conversations with the homeowners, right, Bob?
With Mr. Vortman, yeah.
Okay. So yeah, that's fine.
So looking at the pictures of Stop 28, when I look at that seawall that's there, that's perpendicular to the lake, what is the proposal there? To clean up all that?
Yes. Let me bring the picture up here so I have it in front of me. You can see the end of that wall, Pete. It's the property directly, the Denver seawall, which you can see where it's been patched there. And if you look on the ground, I don't know where the heck my pictures are of that. So when you look, you can see the concrete, you see the square metal things that are... Those are tiebacks that were installed in that wall. And then there's some oblong or rectangular metal pieces above. Those are tiebacks that were installed at a later date after the wall was built. Then you go back and you can see that tree where all the root system is hanging.
Yeah.
Tree is actually what's the last thing that's stopping the erosion from going up into the stair area. And all that, that area where you see there's like a four by four that's stuck underneath one section of the tree is stuck on a piece of riprap. That's not actually stone, it's a piece of concrete. So the proposal would be modified to take those pieces and move them back up to where that tree is and put the stone revetment along that area to protect that town property or the town access where the stairs are.
So the protection would run from where to where?
It would run from that concrete wall east, across the 40 foot of what most people perceive as the town access. But the town actually owns the next 40 foot lot as well. Then there's a private owner, then there's more, I think there's two town lots, then there's another private owner with two lots, and then there's four town lots.
Right.
So the protection would only go across the stair area and then into, if this picture, you can't see a little bit, you see where that log is that's in the bottom left, Pete?
Yeah.
If you were to go a little south of that, you'd see where that erosion is starting to go up the hill.
Sure.
If you read it in Stop. So the goal would be to protect where that tree is, and then come along to protect the town property back to behind that log. And, you know, I would say it's probably 50 feet of the 80 foot lot.
So how far, how far towards Lake Shore Drive would the wall extend? In other words, it's going to come east from the base of that wall, and then at some point in time, it's going to turn up towards Lake Shore Drive, yes?
Yes.
And then how far up towards Lake Shore Drive will it go?
Well, I wouldn't, you know, I, the way it's drawn on the drawings on the stop, down by the Osborne, they have it going up a little further than I think I would suggest that it goes on this particular property. I wouldn't go back more than maybe 15 or 20 feet. Because at that point, you have to continue to protect further down the line. down the line. You know, if I'm making sense, further east, there's, it's kind of like the stop 21 club. After you get those first two lots, then it's private ownership for 40 feet.
Yes, yes. Okay.
Then it goes back, but it does go back to public ownership, I think, for 80, and then private for 40, 80, and then, then private or public for 160.
Okay, so, so-
And I may be off by 40 feet there.
On the ba, at the base of that wall that we see, how, how far out into the lake, or towards the lake does it start? Right there at the base of the tree, close?
It started at the base of the tree. We'll see where that four by four is.
Okay, I got it.
It, where that, where the, the pass line is on this concrete seawall, the toe of it would be where that large rock is, and then it would move back towards the tree 10 feet.
And how high, how high will the revetment be?
Well, it would be 10 feet wide and eight to 10 feet tall.
Would it be sloped, Larry?
Yes, it would be, Joe, it would be like the, if you look at the, the drawings for the Vortman property, it's the same engineer. Slope, but you, you'd like to have the, the slope be gradual, but not, you don't want it too long, because then it's a problem to traverse. And ideally, you know, when, when that protection is done, you're going to dig down and you're going to excavate and put the bedding stone in. You would, it's kind of like what's happened at the 2948 property. Right now, probably 80% of that stone revetment is now covered with sand that through, you know, what they call the accretion, which is just deposits of sand from the lake that have washed up on the rock. And ideally, that's what, obviously, we'd like to see. And the hope is, is that when, if we don't get shore ice, which you've talked about earlier today, that we have protection for the stop 28 property, as well as it protects, protects the, the flank of the Denver property. And that was the caveat that, you know, the, the, the town would not have to pay for it. Yes?
As I'm looking at your picture, and I'm looking at that wall, which obviously is the owner's property of that, it, it's the owner of that property, do you know how far his property protrudes, or does it stop right at the wall?
You know, I've looked at the, at the, Joe, to be honest with you, I've, I've looked at the site plan and I have it, but I, I don't recall. I'm pretty certain that it's, there's a sink down there. I think it's probably about a foot or two off that concrete wall.
Okay. It's the only thing I just wondered, and probably not, whether all of this street, if we call it that, is the street that's laying there against the wall, and that he put it there, and maybe he needs it for protection of his wall?
Well, the stuff that you see, let me look back at the picture again, hold on.
And I'm looking at the parts that are lakeward, Larry, not, not, not hillward, but towards the lake. There's a whole clump there.
Right. What, what I'm going to suggest to you is, when you bring equipment down there, you see the stuff with the asphalt on it that's lake, that's lakeward?
Right.
That stuff, at one point in time, was not that far lakeward. It doesn't really do any good to sit there. The goal is, is to stop, so you would want to take that and move it along up to the concrete wall, and then, so that it wasn't splayed out 30 or 40 feet into the public access.
No. Okay, Larry, I, I was just curious whether that homeowner would have a horse in the race.
You mean outside of paying for it?
Yeah. Okay.
Uh, no, I'm good.
Pete?
Fine.
Bob?
I'm going to set up a meeting.
Okay. So if I'm getting, what I hear correctly is, everybody's okay with the proposals if they move it back away from the wall, and the, the, there has to be a positive outcome with the meeting from, with the homeowners and Chris next week.
All right. And then, Larry, the only thing I would say is that, before we give it an okay, I'd like to see it all drawn up, so we know exactly what, what our dimensions are, as always, so we have documentation.
Yeah, I, and, and I, I didn't ask the engineer to do that, because I wanted to make sure that, I didn't want the homeowner to go and spend another $10,000 having the engineer draw up another plan that we're going to knock down. So if everybody's okay with moving that revetment off the steel sheet piling and pulling it back, that the concept is approvable. Is that what I'm understanding from everybody?
Yes.
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 And Larry, I stress the word "approvable," that we have to evaluate it once we see it.
Right, I understand.
Okay.
All right. Public comment? Or anybody on the commission have any comment?
Just want to say, public comment, we're going to limit public comment to three minutes. And if somebody goes over three minutes, my alarm goes off, they're going to be muted. I don't want to have any ugly confrontations with anybody. That's just the way it's going to be.
Thanks, Bob. Any other comments from the board, uh, commission members? Okay, public comment? If you want to have public comment, I would suggest that you just unmute yourself and if more people than one want to public comment, then we'll have to pick and choose until we get them all done. Any public comment? Are there any more bingos?
Motion to adjourn.
Okay.
Wait a minute, wait, wait, wait. What do we need to do with the Vortman thing?
Uh, that's the meeting-
We're going to set up a meeting.
With the homeowners. And I'm going to tell, I'm going to get ahold of the engineer right now and tell him that we've discussed it, and that if they move, the consensus is that they, they move the stone off the wall and put it at a, let's call it a similar pitches, the 36, or 3006, or whatever it was, that it, it, there was consent among the group that it was approvable, but there has to be the agreement with the homeowners and the town.
I understand. And that's, that's same as 28, yes?
Yes.
Okay. Second motion to adjourn.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? There, there better not be anybody opposed. All right, thanks, guys.
Aye, everybody.